Golden Eagle Regional Park was created in 2008 and is the largest public works project in the history of Sparks. The state of the art facility features 1.4 million square feet of artificial turf, the largest single installation in North America. Here is the final leg in the finish line to the spectacular sprint in Sparks. Teams must drive to the lookout point and take a selfie. There, they will be able to spot the mayor of the city of Sparks and myself. And we'll come down, the first to arrive will win the spectacular sprint.
Oh, Archie, got it first! Woo! We made it! Yay! Yay! Good job, guys. Good job, good job. How's it doing? How'd you get here? (laughing). Hey, greetings! Hi, thank you. Nice to meet you.
The orange team, Jamie and John, are the winners of the first spectacular sprint in Sparks. I'm really proud to give you the first place prize, which is a $500 gift certificate to the outlet at Sparks. Mayor Martini, thank you for being part of the finish line today.
It's awesome. It's a good start.
And on behalf of the entire city of Sparks, we want to thank our contestants and we want to thank our viewers for tuning in and observing and watching and learning a little bit more about the city of Sparks. Until next time, thanks for watching. Don't forget, it's happening here. That's good. Good job, good job, good job, good job.
Emergency helicopters transport sick and injured patients daily. It is imperative that our patients and flight teams are able to complete their flights without encountering any drone activity. If we encounter a drone in the area of our operation, we'll be forced to alter our flight path, which could cause delay in patient care or even worse, be unable to complete our mission. Even a small drone can cause serious damage, injury, and even death. If we experience a drone strike of any size, we are required to land immediately. We'll be unable to fly until the aircraft has been inspected. This would be detrimental to any patient onboard aircraft who is depending on rapid transport.
If you fly a drone, make sure you fly below 400 feet. Keep drone in line of sight at all times. Don't fly within two miles of any hospital because they have helipads that are frequently utilized by medical helicopters. Do not fly over any incident or scene where there are patients, EMS personnel, law enforcement, military, or fire crews.
Ground the drone immediately if you hear aircraft in your area and check FAA guidelines and state laws before flying any drone.
Fly safe out there!
Okay, we're entertaining the senator up here, so we were... And before we get started, congratulations, Senator Ratty. We love it.[285.27][285.27](applause). So, having said that, I'd like to call to order the Sparks City Council's special election meeting of November 14th, 2016 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini?
Here.
Council members Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Byby?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
City Attorney Adams?
Here.
City Manager Driscoll?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, next, if you'll all stand for the invocation, we have Pastor Barb West from Sparks Nazarene Church. Welcome, Pastor.
Thank you so much. What a glorious and great day. Would you bow your heads in prayer with me, please? Our heavenly Father, how we thank you for this great group of people. Lord, we thank you for all of those on the council who have served. And we pray that you will bless them in this wonderful community that we call ours, named Sparks. And Lord, we thank you too for all of the people that have been elected to help us to lead this wonderful city forward. And so, we pray that you would give them wisdom and bless them. Thank you for our mayor, and we pray for Mayor Martini that he might enjoy good health. We pray that for all of the rest of the members of this fine council. Thank you, Lord, for the service that President Obama has given, and we pray a blessing upon our incoming President-elect Trump. We thank you for all of that. We ask you to bless Sparks, bless Nevada, and Lord, bless these United States of America, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Barbara. That was wonderful. Thank you so much. If you'd remain standing, please, for the pledge allegiance, Mr. Smith. Would you lead us, Mr. Smith?
It's my honor. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, I looked around to see so many people here, I was thinking maybe this was a board of equalization meeting or something out of council. They always get good attendance there. So, let's do special, or next is opening ceremonies we've done, public comment. Do we have anybody on for a couple of public comment? Fill out a card, please. First, we have Anonymous. If you'll come on up, please. And I think we're going to rename you Unanimous.
Good afternoon. I am speaking anonymously due to the retaliation we survivors of domestic violence are suffering. Congratulations to the council members who were re-elected, and much success to the outgoing council members, and much success to the incoming council members. I hope that you will, those who are transitioning out, will provide the new council members with the Nevada Supreme Court ruling, case number 59139. That's the city of Sparks ruling, which makes all council members culpable for funding the municipal court's destruction of child abuse evidence. Those are the court case files that the municipal court handles that are the domestic violence case files that contain witnesses' statements to injuries to children that cannot be destroyed legally under NRS 11.250. I hope you will also provide your incoming council members with the copy of your excess liability carrier policy. That is the policy that you have a self-retainer amount. The city of Sparks pays the first self-retainer amount, usually about $150,000, and then the policy takes over. The liability carrier pays anything over and above the $150,000, but it's important to know that there's policy limits so that these children who have received lifelong injuries due to domestic violence will have their medical expenses paid for well into the future. I also would hope that you would tell the incoming new council members that the lawsuits are retroactive back to the date of the injuries, so the new council members are sued from the date they take office going forward. Unfortunately, being a council member, you get the good with the bad, so these lawsuits are ongoing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Okay. Moving on, is 5.1 is canvas the vote and declare the results of the 2016 election. Adam, uh, clerk, Teresa, go ahead.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. Teresa Gardner, city clerk. And today, I'm before you to ask you to canvas the vote and declare them official from the 2016 election. I will provide you with a summary. For the city of Sparks, the total voter registration was 54,075. Our turnout was 43,003. That's a 79.5% voter turnout. Early voters, 27,662. That was 64% of our voters voted early. Absentee voters, 3,000, 2,008, and that was 8% of our voters. And then, on election day, we had 12,111, which is 28% of the voters. As a result of those votes, our city attorney, Chet Adams, ran unopposed and is totally elected. For Council Ward 1, Donald Abbott received 18,666 votes, which was 50.88%. Council Ward 3, incumbent Ron Smith received 23,411 votes, that was 65.35%. Council Ward 5, Christopher Dare, received 18,240 votes, which was 51.38%. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions or ask you to declare those results official.
Questions for our clerk. Seeing none, looking for a motion. Mr. Lawson?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I move to declare the results of the 2016 election official, and the winners to be Donald Abbott for Council Ward 1, Ron Smith for Council Ward 3, Christopher Dare for Council Ward 5, and by unanimous vote, Chet Adams for City Attorney.[727.01][727.01](laughter).
Yikes. Okay, we have a second, Ms. Byby?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Ms. Byby to approve the canvas of votes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.[748.44][748.44](applause). You know, the voting turnout, I guess you could notice, if you want to get elected, you better get started before early voting, because if you don't, you won't be there. So, that's a good lesson and a good turnout, really, I think. Very competitive races as we look at the percentages and stuff. So, congratulations to the city of Sparks voters for doing a great job this election. So, all right, 5.2 oath of office, if we want to get started on that. Who's, Adam? Oh, Ms. McCarthy. You're going to do the oath, right? Okay, good. All right. So, you need Chet and Donald. Are you going to do Chet alone or the other two by themselves? What are you going to do?
We're going to do each one of them.
We're going to do them one at a time, my understanding is, and they're going to do them standing right behind you. I'm going to administer the oath. And we want them, I think, Mr. Adams, they want you standing in front of the city of Sparks over here. Just doing what I was told, giving direction.
All three of us?
Just one at a time. They want them one at a time.
You want us to move out of the way here?
It's up to you folks if you'd like to do that. Okay, and for the record, I am Judge Barbara McCarthy of the Sparks Municipal Court, Department 1. And, Mr. Adams, it's my pleasure to ask you to raise your right hand. I, Chet Adams?
I, Chet Adams.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend?
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States?
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And the Constitution and government of the state of Nevada?
And the Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Whether domestic or foreign?
Whether domestic or foreign.
And that I will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty?
That I will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty.
To the same, any ordinance?
To the same, any ordinance?
Resolution?
Resolution.
Or law of any state notwithstanding?
Or law of any state notwithstanding.
Pursuant to Section 1.110?
Pursuant to Section 1.110?
Of the Sparks City Charter?
Of the Sparks City Charter.
I swear and affirm?
I swear and affirm.
That I am not under any direct or indirect obligation?
That I am not under any direct or indirect obligation?
To vote for?
To vote for.
Appoint?
Appoint.
Or elect any person?
Or elect any person.
To any office?
To any office.
Position?
Position.
Or employment in the city government?
Or employment in the city government.
And that I will well and faithfully?
That I will well and faithfully?
Perform all the duties?
Perform all the duties?
Of the office of city attorney?
Of the office of city attorney?
For the city of Sparks?
For the city of Sparks.
Washoe County?
Washoe County.
State of Nevada?
State of Nevada.
On which I am about to enter?
On which I'm about to enter.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
So, Donald, I think you're next.
Actually, Ron is next.
Okay.
They're telling me to go by seniority here.
No problem. Works for me.
Okay. And, Mr. Smith, again, it is my privilege to ask you to raise your right hand. I, Ron Smith?
I, Ron Smith.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend?
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States?
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And the Constitution and government of the state of Nevada?
And the Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Whether domestic or foreign?
Whether domestic or foreign.
And that I will bear true faith?
And that I will bear true faith.
Allegiance and loyalty?
Allegiance and loyalty.
To the same of any ordinance?
To the same of any ordinance?
Resolution?
Resolution.
Or law of any state notwithstanding?
Or law of any state notwithstanding.
Pursuant to Section 1.110?
Pursuant to Section 1.110?
Of the Sparks City Charter?
Of the Sparks City Charter.
I swear and affirm?
I swear and affirm.
That I am not under any direct?
That I am not under any direct?
Or indirect?
Or indirect.
Obligation?
Obligation.
To vote for?
To vote for.
Appoint?
Appoint.
Or elect?
Or elect.
Any person to any office?
Any person to any office.
Position?
Position.
Or employment in the city government?
Or employment in the city government.
And that I will well and faithfully?
And that I will well and faithfully?
Perform all the duties?
Perform all the duties?
Of the office of council member?
Of the office of council member?
Ward 3?
Ward 3.
For the city of Sparks?
For the city of Sparks.
Washoe County?
Washoe County.
State of Nevada?
State of Nevada.
On which I am about to enter?
Of which I'm about to enter.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.[1088.35][1088.35](applause).
Yeah, that's the first time I think I saw the oath given one word at a time. You've got to know your limits.[1102.85][1102.85](laughter).
Good afternoon, Mr. Abbott?
Hello.
And welcome. It is my privilege and honor to ask you to raise your right hand. I, Donald Abbott?
I, Donald Abbott.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend?
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States?
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And the Constitution and government of the state of Nevada?
And the Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Whether domestic or foreign?
Whether domestic or foreign.
And that I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
Allegiance and loyalty?
Allegiance and loyalty.
To the same of any ordinance?
To the same of any ordinance?
Resolution?
Resolution.
Or law of any state notwithstanding?
Or law of any state notwithstanding.
Pursuant to Section 1.110?
Pursuant to Section 1.110?
Of the Sparks City Charter?
Of the Sparks City Charter.
I swear and affirm?
I swear and affirm.
That I am not under any direct or indirect obligation?
That I'm not under any direct or indirect obligation?
To vote for?
To vote for.
Appoint?
Appoint.
Or elect?
Or elect.
Any person to any office?
Any person, or any person in the office?
Position or employment?
Position or employment?
In the city government?
In the city government.
And that I will well and faithfully?
That I will well and faithfully?
Perform all the duties?
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of council member?
Of the office of council member?
Ward 1?
Ward 1.
For the city of Sparks?
For the city of Sparks.
Washoe County?
Washoe County.
State of Nevada?
State of Nevada.
On which I am about to enter?
On which I am about to enter.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.[1214.23][1214.23](applause).
One more.
Last, and certainly not least, Mr. Dare, it is a pleasure to see you again. And it is my privilege and my honor to ask you to raise your right hand, which you've already cooperated with. I, Christopher Dare?
I, Christopher Dare.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend?
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States?
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And the Constitution and government of the state of Nevada?
And the Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Whether domestic or foreign?
Whether domestic or foreign.
And that I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
Allegiance and loyalty?
Allegiance and loyalty.
To the same of any ordinance?
To the same of any ordinance?
Resolution?
Resolution.
Or law of any state notwithstanding?
Or law of any state notwithstanding.
Pursuant to Section 1.110?
Pursuant to Section?
1.
1.110.
Of the Sparks City Charter?
Of the Sparks City Charter.
I swear and affirm?
I swear and affirm.
That I am not under any direct or indirect obligation?
That I am not under any direct or indirect obligation?
To vote for?
To vote for.
Appoint?
Appoint.
Or elect?
Or elect.
Any person to any office?
Any person to any office.
Position or employment?
Position or employment.
In the city government?
In the city government.
And that I will well and faithfully?
And that I will well and faithfully?
Perform all duties of the office of council member?
Perform all duties of the office of council member?
Ward 5?
Ward 5.
For the city of Sparks?
For the city of Sparks.
Washoe County?
Washoe County.
State of Nevada?
State of Nevada.
On which I am about to enter?
Which I'm about to enter.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Okay, very good, very good. Take some time to pull up on the internet or wherever the oath of office and just read it word by word and just think about it. It's pretty impressive, really, and it's a big, big promise that people make when they take seats up here. So, I want to congratulate everybody for putting yourself out there, Donald, Christopher, Mr. Smith again.
Thank you.
So, it's Mr. Adams, of course, so it's huge, believe me, so thank you all for willing to serve. Okay, comments from the public? Do we have anybody who wants to speak, any comments from the public? Seeing none, comments from the city council and city manager? Let's see, I think, I don't, do I have you on both sides there, Anonymous? Yeah, you, come on up if you want. That's all right.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Congratulations, new council members. I wish you much success. I would just like to update the council on the close ties in northern Nevada of persons who are concealing their knowledge of the destruction of child abuse evidence. The local law firm of Shook and Stone has an attorney by the name of Julie Shook. Julie Shook chose to leave the firm. Her husband, John Shook, stayed at the firm, and she became an attorney for the government representing child abuse cases. Julie then served for a time and was finally let go. The problem with her representing the children was she chose not to bring into any of the legal proceedings any evidence of abuse to the children. She chose not to bring in photographs of the battered children, to bring in witness statements, and to bring in medical records and police reports. Julie Shook was let go, but before she was let go by the government, she began recording symptoms of her mental illness in court documents. These court documents then were known by her supervisor, who, as a side, was also eventually let go. But these symptoms then, after she was let go, unfortunately resulted in a very tragic tragedy to her family due to mental illness. Another person here in the local community who is aware of the concealment of child abuse evidence is the FBI. As you know, they're housed in Reno. They had an FBI agent in the 1990s by the name of Togliotti. In the 1990s is when the Violence Against Women's Act came to the state of Nevada funded by the federal government, and the state of Nevada chose to take the funds and staff a person in each courthouse up and down the state of Nevada with a person to assist survivors of domestic violence in legal matters. These persons that were staffed did not have any legal training, therefore, a lot of legal errors occurred in the courts. The reason I mention the name Togliotti is the Court of Chief District Judge Togliotti was investigated by the FBI. Chief District Court Judge Togliotti did not provide the FBI with the database of the abused children's cases, therefore, the FBI could not conclude that the child abuse evidence was destroyed. Thank you for your time.
Seeing none, comments from the city council and city manager, anyone? Okay, seeing no further business, we are adjourned. Yikes. Give us a couple minutes to get flipped over to the next meeting and we'll be right on our way. Just tell me when, Teresa? Ready, Donald?
Yeah.
All right. I'd like to call to order the Sparks City Council meeting of November 14th, 2016, together with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini?
Here.
Councilmember Abbott?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Byby?
Here.
Dare?
Here.
City Attorney Adams?
Here.
And city manager Driscoll?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Okay, if you'd all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. Mr. Abbott, would you lead us, please?
Of course. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is public comment. If you want to make a public comment, please fill out one of these sheets and I'll bring you up to speak. First of all, we have Anonymous? Okay. Next, we have Donna Clontz. Come on up, Donna.
I have Wayne Alexander with me as well. We're here representing both the Washoe County Senior Services Advisory Committee. Wayne and I are both members of that, and also, I'm representing the Reno Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. and I are both members of that, and also I'm representing the Reno Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, I'm Chair of that as well. We have a couple of things for you today on public comment, I don't know, do I need to sit and do the mic, or is that all right? Okay, we wanted to let you know about this event that's coming up, it's starting tomorrow, Stuff a Bus for Seniors. It's a cooperative effort of the whole community that collects various things that our seniors need, things like pool carts and bus passes and scholarships to the Ollie Program, jackets and sweat clothes, things like that, gift cards to Walmart, to bookstores, to cut shops and those kinds of things, household cleaning supplies, adult diapers, and heaters during the wintertime. And once these items are collected in barrels, and this is just a Stuff a Bus, this is a cover for a food bank barrel, basically, folks can just drop these things in the barrels that will be located inside Reno City Hall, County, Washoe County, RTC, let's see, I think that's pretty much it. But we're hoping, part of what we wanted to talk to you about, is that in the future there'll be a Sparks piece to this whole process. So all these things are then collected and they are given to Washoe County Senior Services' social workers, who distribute the things that our community folks have donated that our low-income seniors need in the coming months here at winter. On December 7th, Pearl Harbor Day, there'll be a special RTC bus that'll be down at the stadium, the baseball stadium, that folks can stuff, stuff in, that's the Stuff a Bus name here, and the folks that show up on that day will get a free passes to the ice skating program this wintertime, so we want to let people know about Stuff a Bus. Second of all, Wayne and I brought a bunch of information about senior services for all of the members of the council, that includes statistical information about the senior population, about 35% of the folks in Washoe County, including the City of Sparks, City of Reno, and unincorporated areas, are people 50 years and older, which is the age range that we start serving our seniors at the recreation programs and then older at our county programs and so on. And so about a third of our citizens are seniors in our community, and they tell us that the big things that they need are things that this City Council, I know, is working on. They need transportation, better transportation, they need better access to services, they need more access to information about what services exist out there, as well as various support mechanisms so that they can stay home, stay well, stay independent at home. And our senior advisory board, both the county senior advisory board that Wayne and I are on, and the city advisory board, work together on these kinds of things throughout the year. As many of you, when you, three of you ran for office and we held a community candidate forum, and we gave you, the three of you that were running this time, some statistics, and each one of you now has a copy of that in front of you, and we asked questions of you and we talked about issues that had come up, and one of the issues for Sparks that has come up is that seniors here in this community would like City of Sparks to create a Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, just like the one Reno has and that the county has. And so we'd like to invite you all to think about that, we'd like to make some appointments, maybe get it on the city's agenda, so that the seniors in the Sparks community can participate in helping you solve those problems of transportation and service information and help us do programs like Stuff a Bus and those kinds of things that fit the folks in here in the City of Sparks. We've also given you a resource guide that we just got printed, this came about through the City of Reno group, through some of the funding that we got from the City of Reno, to provide a resource guide that's really small, that any individual could use if they needed immediate help on what's out there for me and for my family. And we'd like to be able to create one of these for Sparks, if we had our Sparks Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. So we thank you for the time, we congratulate those of you who are brand-new to the council, we're glad to see the faces of those of you who we've worked with for many years, and we look forward to working with you in the future. I have four of these that are bigger info guides, if any of you need one of these, we'll get more of them for each one of you, but I'll give these to the clerk and you can get them from her. This is a large catalog we've condensed into that little brochure, so thank you very much for the time.
Thanks, Donna, does anyone want to ask a question or anything?
Yes, we have, we'd be glad to answer any questions we can.
Sure, Steve made some notes about an advisory committee, I think that's a good idea, we look into that. Thanks, Donna.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no objections, I'll spend some staff time on that.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm sorry, we're still in public comment. Mr. Bill Isaiah.
Mr. Mayor, if I may be permitted, you still have to address the council's Agenda Item 9.1 as being considered.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Anyone else under public comment? Okay. Okay, next, approval of the agenda, anybody want to take anything out of order, if not looking for a motion? Mr. Lawson.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a second, Mr. Smith.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve the agenda as outlined by staff, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. All right, one vote down, boys, 3,000 to go. Passes unanimously. 3,000 or so. 6.1, consideration of possible approval of the minutes of the regular Sparks City Council meeting of October 24, 2016. Any omissions, deletions, or corrections? Okay, seeing none, we need a motion, Mr. Lawson.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
We need a second, Ms. Byby?
Second.
Move by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Ms. Byby to approve the minutes of the October 24, 2016 meeting. Any further questions? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thank you. All right, let's move on to 7.1, proclamation for Councilman Ron Schmidt Day and tribute to Councilman Schmidt. Mr. Schmidt, you want to come on up, please? Quite an impressive-looking group of people. Okay, let me read the proclamation, Ron, first, I think you know how this goes, and then we'll make some other presentations. Whereas Councilman Ron Schmidt has served the City of Sparks devotedly representing Ward Five since June 2001, and whereas is a longtime resident of the City of Sparks, Nevada, Councilman Schmidt has dedicated his life to improving his city. And whereas a former contractor and business consultant, Councilman Schmidt has served in many roles in Sparks City Government. In 2005, Councilman Schmidt was selected as the Public Official of the Year by the Nevada League of Cities and Municipalities. And whereas Councilman Schmidt has served for more than 15 years on the Sparks City Council, serving on important regional boards and commissions throughout the Trekkie Meadows, to include the Information Technology Steering Committee and Chairman of the Sparks Tourism and Marketing Committee. And whereas Councilman Schmidt has been a champion of enhancing special events and ensuring cost recovery of many city programs to protect the interests of Sparks citizens. And whereas Councilman Schmidt's hard work, commitment, and dedication to the City of Sparks can be seen throughout his tenure with the city and will never be forgotten, we thank Councilman Ron Schmidt for everything he's done to help make Sparks the special place it is today. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim November 14, 2016, as Ron Schmidt Day. Good to see you, Ron, and then we have a special presentation.
Someone told me on my first day of office, be careful for what you ask for, you just might get it, and I can tell you that everything I've asked for from the City of Sparks, serving the last 15 years, it's been an extremely wonderful journey. I can't tell you the things I've learned and how the city has grown, 50,000 to almost 100,000 in 16 years. Being a part of a great council and a great city has just been very, very humbling. A few weeks ago, we had the Fire Department here, and we had 65 years of the Fire Department represented, and I just want to kind of give you some examples of the City Council, that there are seven elected officials sitting on the dais, and I've been involved in the city government for 16, almost 16 years, and I've only had five other people other than the four up there that I've worked with in those 16 years. That's phenomenal government, that's phenomenal, people doing things right, and I just want to say thank you to all of you and to all the citizens, the staff, everybody, for making this journey for what it is. I appreciate it, it's been wonderful, thank you.
Before you leave, we have a parting gift, Ron, and Adam will give that to you right now. And again, thanks, Ron, for the 16 years we spent all together, you and I.
What about you, Ron? The word that comes to my mind is stewardship, serious and focused.
One word would be tenacious, I think, with Ron, he gets something in his mind that he wants to do and he goes for it. He takes it right to the end to make sure that it's something that can be done, and if he wants it to get done, he pushes as hard as he can to get it, and I admire him for how he handles those kind of things.
Passionate.
Intense. In a good way.
Let's say investigative, he gets down to the issues that really concerns him, 16 years as a public servant is a long time, and to be dedicated that long to the City of Sparks, it's, you know, you've got to say something for that, that's a good thing to do.
Councilman Schmidt, best wishes to you always, and thank you for always being a huge support for me. Thank you and take care.
I think for me, Ron Schmidt's thoughtful approach to everything, I think he does his homework, I think he's, he meets with staff, he meets with people to formulate an opinion. I may not always agree with them, but I appreciate his input on everything.
And Ron, I wish you the best in the future.
Councilman Schmidt, thank you for your dedicated service.
I think the best way to describe Ron was someone who was always willing to ask a good question, even if it was uncomfortable.
I just thank you for your years of service, many years to this community, your passion and intensity, on behalf of your constituents and on behalf of the city.
I think there's been an entire physical change in the city with wonderful projects like Red Hawk, DeAndrea, great housing stock to bring in some money for the city and tax-wise, and I think we've just grown up politically-wise where we're not seen as a, not, lack of better words, the stepchild of the region, we're now a player of the region, and I think we control our own destiny in the City of Sparks.
Hey, Ron, it's been a pleasure working with you, I know you're going to miss that council meeting candy.
Ron, it has been a pleasure. My word for you is recognition, and it's from the standpoint of your ability to see the multiple sides of any issue that we put in front of you, see the potentials coming forward on how the city might act or not act, and how things might change as they came forward, and look a couple of steps down the road. It required us as a staff to be well-prepared and well-thought-out when we were appearing in front of you, and we are a better city, serving a better population because of your efforts, so we're certainly going to miss you, thanks, Ron.
I do want the citizens to know that the financial condition of this city is in much better shape than it was in 2001. Councilman Schmidt, I believe I was a driving force in helping to develop financial policies and goals that really allowed the city to travel through 2008. It hurt, you know, we had a lot of layoffs, there was a lot of things, but we had cash in the bank, you know, more than the state law allowed us to have, and that was a saving grace for the City of Sparks.
We want to thank you for standing by your beliefs.
I appreciate your directness and predictability, to be honest, and I really appreciate everything you've done, thank you.
For every elected official leaving office, you know, the one goal you should have coming in, the one goal you should have coming out, is that you're leaving your community better when you leave than when you got there, you know, whether it's just a little tiny bit or a great big thing, it doesn't matter, it's every elected official's job to make your community just a little bit better, and I feel very, very good, after 15 years in office, there's a lot of things out there that got done.
Well, you know, my clerk gave me a script on how this was supposed to go, and it says VPP, and we've met about this seven times, it says video, which I went right over and did the proclamation, then proclamation, then the present, so, sorry about what you gave in big letters, and it specifically says VPP, which should be video proclamation, so we'll get the next one right. Here's the party gifts. Okay, let me look at my... We're going to do something for Julia Ratty now, and see, that's a V for video, okay? I got it now, pal.
Yeah.
Go ahead with the video.
If I were to choose one word to describe you, it would be articulate, advocate.
Committed, she should be committed.
Councilwoman Ratty, I think the thing that best describes you for me is being a voice of reason.
Politically, we're on the opposite end of the spectrum, but I've enjoyed working with Julia so much, she's honest, she's dedicated, she does her job, she comes prepared, and she asks good questions.
So I think one thing that nobody knows about Julia is that before she ran for office, she basically lived her life in blue jeans and puller fleece, and so when she decided to run for City Council, she actually got a good friend of hers, who is a little bit more fashion-sensible than she is, to help her up her game. And so they came over to the house and they went through her closet and took all of her dress clothes out of the closet, laid them out, and they put together outfits. And so what we did then is took photographs of Julia and I printed them out and made a little booklet, so Julia could look at that booklet when she was going to dress in the morning, and say, oh yeah, that blouse goes with this jacket with this skirt and these shoes, and, oh, and even this necklace, and I'll look professional today. And so she kind of had to learn to dress like an adult when she decided to run for office.
Candor, because you were always sincere in everything that you did, you were always very direct and upfront.
Level-headed. Compassionate.
Well, there's no one word or phrase that describes Julia, she's awesome, she's, you know, she's been a very, very good leader, she's been, I think, really turned us around in the city as far as culture and things that we need to do and arts and those kind of things that we've never even thought about in the past.
I think the word is dedicated, Julia is dedicated to the city that she grew up in and she continues to live in, and I think that represents her very well.
Passionate.
Intelligent.
I wanted to thank you for your service and always being a great advocate for the employees, best wishes in your future.
I'm sure she thought I was going to be the crazy conservative that was coming onto the council, and I was worried about her being the crazy liberal, and how would we work together, and actually, we've been in sync.
Julia was, had it a little rough, you know, she's a Democrat, there's four Republicans on this, on this, five Republicans on this council, and, you know, it's nonpartisan, but, you know, those politics come into play all the time, so. She's done a wonderful job in getting her side of the story into the council, and her side of what should be done in the budgets, and she's, you know, been, again, another driving force in keeping us in the right direction, one of the smartest people that I've ever met, definitely the smartest person on this council, that doesn't say much.
I think that she sees the value in things that maybe aren't shiny and new and really likes to make them, make them good again.
Julia, you're going to be missed, I always felt you were a voice of reason, good luck to you.
Julia, I wish you the best in the future.
Hello, Julia, really love working with you, it's been a great joy.
Julia, as you kind of go out the door, one of the things that I think I'm going to miss the most is, you're really worried about the entire community, all the segments.
Councilwoman Ratty, we want to thank you for bringing such a fresh perspective to the council.
So, the experience has been fabulous, and in that way, it's more than exceeded my expectations, some of the people that I've had the opportunity to work with and some of the things that I've been able to do are the opportunity of a lifetime. It was nothing like what I expected it to be, however.
She doesn't get rattled easily, she very rarely loses her temper or lets herself get angry, and so I think that serves her well in public service.
And so I feel like I did a good job of keeping that balance and making sure that... And so I feel like I did a good job of keeping that balance and making sure that, you know, the people, the voters who put me here got the responsiveness that they deserved from staff, they got my time and attention, and we got some things done.
Let me check my agenda here. Next is the proclamation. Whereas Senator Julia Ratty has served the City of Sparks devotedly, representing Ward 1 since 2008. And whereas as a longtime resident of the City of Sparks, Nevada, Senator Ratty has dedicated her council tenure to improving her city. And whereas a nonprofit manager and former Girl Scout executive, Senator Ratty has dedicated her career to helping and underserved and underrepresented. And whereas a graduate of the University of Nevada Reno and University of San Francisco, Senator Ratty has inspired a younger generation of women to strive for excellence in leadership and personal development. And whereas Senator Ratty has served eight dedicated years on the Sparks City Council, serving on important boards and commissions such as the Washoe County District Board of Health, Truckee Meadows Water Authority, Capital Funding Protection Committee and Oversight Committee for School Facilities, Sparks Legislative Team, and was chair of the city's redevelopment agency. And whereas Senator Ratty's hard work, commitment, and dedication to the City of Sparks can be seen throughout her tenure in grand improvements in infrastructure and development throughout Ward 1 and Victorian Square, playing a major role in bringing single-stream recycling to Sparks, raising awareness of arts and culture, and working to improve health and safety issues throughout the region. And whereas Senator Ratty's accomplishments and contributions will leave a longstanding mark and will never be forgotten, we thank Senator Ratty for everything she's done to help make Sparks the special place it is today. Now, therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim November 15, 2016, as Senator Julia Ratty Day. I tried to talk her out of leaving, but...
Well, first of all, I had asked Councilman Schmidt if we were going to have to share a day, and if so, I wasn't a morning person, so could I have the second half? But it looks like I get my own day, so we're good. And congratulations to you. 16 years is phenomenal. I couldn't do more than eight, so well done. It really, I think what I said on the video probably captures it. It was the experience of a lifetime and such an opportunity for anybody. And so specifically to Mr. Dare and Mr. Abbott, I hope that you'll take a moment, and knowing both of you know that you will, to have some gratitude and to live in the moment because it's going to fly by. And they're just our tough days and amazing days, and make sure that you cherish them all. I was blessed to serve with some incredible people on this council. As I came in, we were all singing that Sesame Street song, "One of these kids is not like the others." "One of these kids just doesn't belong." But somehow, we managed to work through that and pass that, and I am incredibly proud. The thing I am the most proud of is how well we were together as a team. And so I thank each of you that I had the opportunity to serve with for that. Probably even more than my council colleagues, however, I would like to thank the staff. The staff at the City of Sparks is amazing. And when you come in as an elected official, and there's so many serious decisions riding on your shoulders, no matter how broad they are, I can't even explain how comforting it is to know that you've got a competent staff who really are dedicated and care about their city, who have your back and really are doing 99.9% of the work that you get to take credit for. So at every level of our team, and we really did go through hell at the recession when we had to ask so many of our team members to leave, and those that remained could have been bitter, they could have done a lot of things, but they weren't. They leaned in and they made sure that the business of the city moved forward. And so I will forever be grateful for the city staff. Thank you so much. And with that, I live only two blocks away, so I'm going to drop in randomly and make sure that you're still doing the things that I care about.
We will.
And I'm grateful. So, I'm sorry, I do have to take just one last thing. I clearly need to thank my family, first of all, my mom and dad, for being here, for supporting everything that I do, no matter how crazy. And they do tell me that things are crazy on a pretty regular basis, for choosing to live in Sparks. I'm raising me in Sparks. And my husband, who I will get back at, for the photo album, but who keeps me laughing and makes it so that I can continue to do these crazy things that we do. I thank you so much.
We promise those pictures will not be on Facebook, okay?
Yeah, pretty sure they're already on the internet. I'm pretty sure I know how this works. Thank you so much.
Well, great, Julia. Now we have a gift for you, and thank you so much for what you've done for our city. I'm very serious when I say I tried to talk her out of leaving because, you know, she has been really a driving force and really has kind of set us off in the right direction in a lot of things, you know? All us red guys up here, Republicans and mostly conservatives, but she was fit right in after a couple of weeks or so, months, years, whatever.
I think you all came more in my direction, but whatever.
Yeah. So again, thank you. You've got a lot of work ahead of you, and I'm going to tell you one thing right now, Derek. You will never, ever have more fun in politics down the road than you've ever had at the City of Sparks. Trust me. I don't know if you heard the comment, but Julia said, now is that from Senator Reed? And we said, would we not give you a Democratic Dale? Come on. Thanks, Julia. Okay. Back to work, I guess. Okay, consent items, let's move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? 8-1 through 8-7? Okay, looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve consent items 8.1 through 8.7 as presented.
Second, Mr. Smith?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Bybee, seconded by Mr. Smith, to approve agenda items 8-1 through 8-7, the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously, thank you. One thing that's going to change here is I will never, ever again have to say, "Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Schmidt." I always got those mixed up, so thanks, Ron. Okay, let's move on to general business, 9.1, consideration, discussion, and possible approval to make plan design changes to the City of Sparks Group Health Plan as recommended by the City of Sparks Group Health Committee effective January 1, 2017. Who's doing this, Mr. Driscoll? I got to public, I'll get to you, Bill, in a minute. Let's do the presentation first. Welcome.
Good afternoon, council, Mr. Mayor, new Councilman Abbott, new Councilman Dare. Good to see you. Congratulations. I'm Jen McCall from Human Resources. I'm here today, however, as the chairperson of the City of Sparks Group Health Committee. And I'm here today to ask that the city council approve changes as recommended by the group health plan committee, and I'm prepared to answer any questions that you may have regarding these changes.
Questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll open at the public comment. I have one card, Mr. Bill Isaiah. Welcome, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Name you will remember if you've been on the City of Sparks any time is Bill Isaiah. Thank you for all your hard work in the past and the present.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, my name for the record is Bill Isaiah. I'm a City of Sparks former employee and retiree. I had the great privilege of serving more than 10 years on your group health committee as the retiree representative. So I have a deep interest in the interest of retirees with respect to your wonderful health plan that you provide, not only for employees but retirees. However, I do have a couple of concerns about the proposal that is before you today with respect to changes to the plan. And the two areas that I'd like to address are the reduction in benefits for routine dental cleanings and the elimination of the benefit for free OTC drugs. First, the dental cleanings is being proposed to be reduced from four allowed times a year down to just two. There are many studies that validate that there is a distinct coordination between poor dental health and heart disease. Gum disease is a major contributor to heart disease. I think we have a situation here that we ought to be encouraging people, particularly elderly people like myself and other retirees, to make sure that we maintain good dental health. And so I would urge you that you not allow this reduction from four to two, because I think it will, in the end, actually wind up costing you more. What would be better? Which is better for both the plan and the patient? Pay for regular cleanings and examinations or pay for drugs and other treatments that would be possibly associated with heart disease in some of your retirees? Now, I'd offer an alternative also, and that would be that instead of reducing this from four to two, that you merely reduce it from four to three. That will still produce a $20,000 savings to the plan, according to the staff report. The next thing I'd like to address is the elimination of the benefit for free OTC drugs. What you do now, and it's been a very successful program, by the way, is you offer, under a prescription program, to pay for an OTC, Prilosec, Nexium, some of these allergy drugs like Zetra, et cetera. You offer that without a co-pay. And the reason that was offered is because you wanted to get employees and retirees to stop using those more expensive acid blockers and allergy drugs under prescription. And as I say, it worked very effectively. Quite a few of us moved off into those drugs. However, what you have today is a situation, I think, that is not for the benefit of retirees. If you take this benefit entirely away from them, you're going to be requiring them to pay out of pocket, because they just came back from CVS Pharmacy earlier this morning, between $250 and $300 more. Now, retirees are the only people in this program who pay 100% of the premiums of insurance ourselves out of our retirement. And so that's a pretty good little hit to people. And that's on top of the 50% increase we had in our premiums over a two-year period in the past couple of years. So I think the real reason for that was a good one. I think it remains a good reason to continue this particular benefit. If you don't, I suspect what might happen is you'll find that your retirees in particular will go to their doctor and ask for prescription drugs now that are much more expensive than the OTC program. But if you believe that maybe free isn't the right thing to do, then my alternative to you would be to suggest that you modify the staff proposal to place these drugs back under the $5 co-pay. And then we'd all pay the $5 co-pay again, or about $60, $65 a year out of pocket. I think that this would be a much better option for retirees, again, who I would emphasize are the only ones in the plan, and we make up almost 25% of your members, by the way, who have to pay their own premiums 100%. I think the rest of the proposals here are excellent ones, and I would endorse them. If I had been still the representative of the committee, I would have been there, too. Fortunately, I only got to spoke on the committee because retirees don't get a vote on the group health committee. You might want to look into that. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council. I appreciate your giving me the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Bill. Is there any questions for Bill or anything? Okay, anybody else, public comment? Okay, let's close the public comment, bring them back to staff. Questions? Any questions? Go ahead, Ron.
Jen, on the teeth cleaning, how many people use all four times?
We had approximately 41. So our recommendation to increase the third and fourth cleaning was in support of the American Dental Association's recommended annual plan for cleaning. Those who have periodontal disease, it is recommended that you have more. But we do have a $150 healthy lifestyle benefit on our plan that people could get that third cleaning done utilizing their $150 healthy lifestyle benefit.
Okay, you know, and I like all the changes. I think you guys did a great job on them. Any other questions?
One for me, what about the over-the-counter drugs, OTC, going back to $5 co-pay?
So the over-the-counter drugs would be Azurtec, Claritin, your acid reducers, such as the purple pill called Nexium. All of these drugs are now available on your pharmacy aisle. And a lot of these drugs can be received in large quantities at Costco or Walmart. And we had placed this particular benefit in place back in 2001. And the idea at the time was to help people get these medications without the extra cost associated with some of the pharmaceutical drugs at the time. But now that these drugs are so readily available, I even took a prescription in last week, and she said, why would I fill this as a prescription that's on the aisle? These are drugs that are readily available. To go back to a $5 co-pay would not be recommended because they're not a prescription drug. The prescription drug program and the $5 generic costs are for prescription medications. These are just simply not prescription medications anymore. If people need a specific dosage or a specific drug to treat allergies or need an acid reducer that is not available on the aisle, you can still get a prescription for those drugs and have the co-pays of $515 or $40, depending on where the drug is on the formulary.
Any other questions? Charlie?
Jen, I just want to say I do appreciate, you know, the healthcare committee and your work on trying to cut down what is just an escalating healthcare costs and benefits that everyone is seeing. You know, the city and every individual here, there's not anybody in this country that doesn't, isn't just buried by how expensive healthcare is. And so looking at, even though this is not a huge savings, the fact that you're addressing issues to try to rein in some of our costs, which are a challenge, I appreciate that and the work that you've done on this and that I think that all the things that you've suggested are not something that would cause harm necessarily on the dental cleanings. I think the periodontal disease, that would be a concern of mine, but if they're eligible for more cleanings with periodontal disease, that might help there. But I do know, coming from my other job, and I know my husband's, where we've had healthcare and dental care for years, and my sister was a hygienist, two cleanings per year was standard, has been standard, you know, my whole lifetime. So I'm fine with that, and I do appreciate the work that you've done on this. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question for me? Again, Jen, why don't we have a retired representative on the committee?
We do have two retired representatives. That was done through the collective bargaining process.
So how would the change go about? Have to be collectively bargained, again, with all the unions?
I believe so, yes. I wanted to make sure before I said yes, I was giving you the correct answer.
Well, you know, I think that's probably...
We do have a representative and an alternate from the retiree group on the committee who are very vocal and do share their thoughts and their opinions before our three binding groups actually vote.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Any other questions? Okay, looking for a motion then. Mr. Smith?
I move to approve the recommended changes to the City of Sparks Group Health Plan effective at the beginning of the plan year, which is January 1, 2017. And what I like most about this is we've always come forward with increases, and you get some increases and some decreases. So thank you for that.
Do you have a second, Mr. Dare?
I second the motion.
Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Dare. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously, thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill, for coming in. I appreciate that. Okay, let's move on to 9.2, consideration and possible approval of a multi-year service agreement, AC 5317, between the City of Sparks and Smith Power Products to service the Gen Barker cogeneration engine at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility with an estimated annual cost of $63,000. Mr. Drinkwater, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Michael Drinkwater, the wastewater treatment plant manager. You have before you a request to enter into a service agreement for the new cogeneration engine at Tom Wharf. The Gen Barker engine was installed earlier, it went online earlier this year. We've been negotiating this service agreement with Smith Power Products, which is the factory-authorized service provider for this particular engine. It took a little bit of time, went around in circles... It took a little bit of time, went around in circles, but we finally coalesced on an agreement that we can both live with. That is what's before you today. The expense, the, there are two numbers in the staff report I wish to explain. The $39,000 is the estimate of, for the balance of this fiscal year, and then the 62 is for each fiscal year moving forward. This is budget, a budgeted item, and it was also included in the financial calculations to the Amoresco project. This cost was built into the ultimate bottom line savings that that project anticipated. The agreement will be paid for, excuse me, it's charged based upon per hour of runtime on the engine. We are exceedingly, currently exceeding our expected runtime, where it was anticipated to be approximately 85% of uptime. We're doing a little bit better than that right now. The cost of the agreement, the annual cost of the agreement represents approximately 40 days of the savings that the engine provides to the facility. I apologize, gentlemen, particularly new council members. The engine burns methane gas, which is a natural byproduct of the wastewater treatment process. We're putting our own waste product to use to make electricity for the plant. So the savings, the cost of the agreement is approximately 40 days of savings, so the balance of the year would be savings, direct savings to the plant. And with that, I would be happy to answer questions.
Questions for Mr. Drinkwater, Mr. Smith?
Michael, did the, geez, I almost forgot my question. Was there a warranty on this generator?
Yes, sir, it is under warranty.
It is under warranty. So this is just somebody to keep it running all the time? Is that what it is?
Routine, the routine service required is sometimes as simple as changing the spark plugs, or the timing, or all of the things. The actual service agreement is 150 pages long. It details all the things that have to get done to ensure that it remains functioning properly.
Okay, are we splitting that 62,000 with Reno?
Oh, yes, this is an operational cost, so it's prorated. So that's the bottom line, 62 is the total, which will be prorata based on flow, which is approximately, right now, 65%, 35%?
35%. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Dare?
Yes, we just, I just learned that they actually had this. We got on a tour with you about three years ago or so and got to see. And I remember seeing that amazing blue flame going, "Why don't we do something and do that?" And you said it was on the way. So I think it's fantastic. And I think it's important that those, our citizens, know that we are moving forward and saving money however we can, and this actually, I think, is really wise, so.
Ms. Bybee?
Michael, I have a question. Are we changing, so this is the maintenance agreement, are we changing the companies that are providing the maintenance, or we're just extending a new contract, a new agreement with the same maintenance company for the engine?
So because it's a brand-new engine, which went in earlier this year, we've been using Smith Power Products on a piece-by-piece basis, because they are the factory-authorized service provider for this, for Gen Barker engines. It took us a while to get this agreement where we could agree to it. The original, the first draft was a little one-sided, let me say. So the attorney's office and the purchasing manager went round and round with Smith until we got an agreement we can live with. So while the engine has been in service for now eight months, we have been providing service, but we've been doing it not under a maintenance agreement, but just as needed. So this is a brand-new agreement.
Okay, and this is for how long?
It will go for 60,000 hours of runtime. It's estimated to be eight and a half years. It depends upon how, how much runtime we get.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Any public comment? No? Okay, we're looking for a motion, then. Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve the multi-year agreement with Smith Power Products for an estimated annual cost of $62,000.
Looking for a second, Mr. Abbott.
Second. It's my first day.
It'll happen.
It'll count to you, pal, don't worry about it. Let's see, motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Abbott to approve 9.2, as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Michael, thank you so much. There's been so much progress made out there in the last couple of years since you've been there. It's very, very impressive what we've done with nitrogen going into the river and all kinds of different things since you've been there. So I really appreciate it, and I'm still fascinated that the gentleman that runs our sewer plant is named Drinkwater. It's just fascinating to me, I don't know why, so.
Appreciate it, sir.
Thanks, Michael.
And you're certainly welcome, please. I must say, there are 55 people there every single day, so it's certainly a team effort.
Sure, I understand that, but you need a leader, right?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, 9.3. Consideration of and possible action on a tentative map, request for 140 single-family lot division on a site of 23.37 acres in the size, in size, in the PD Plan Development Pioneer Meadows zoning district, generally located on the northwest corner of Wingfield Hills Road and Rolling Meadows Drive in Sparks, Nevada. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Ian Crittenen, senior planner. As stated, this is a request for a tentative map for 140-unit, single-family subdivision in the Pioneer Meadows Plan Development. As you can see on this map, we have, this is the Boulevard here, this is Pi, or Wingfield Hills that comes up over the top and doesn't quite go through yet, and this is Rolling Meadows Parkway, or Rolling Meadows Drive. This request is pretty standard. This, this plan development has been in place since 2000. It's gone under a couple of different changes over the years, some amendments to that handbook. But this area has been anticipated for some time to be developed. The three parcels here, the one furthest to the west has fairly recently been approved for 300 and some change multifamily units. These next two parcels also had an opportunity to either be multifamily or single-family, and the developer has proposed to develop this portion as a single-family. There is a rough, or the tentative map showing the way that it would lay out. The one piece to this that is interesting is that the primary entrance will be here off of Rolling Hills, or am I getting these names right? Rolling Meadows, gosh, I cannot keep them straight, I'm sorry. Rolling Meadows here. They will have a secondary access here off of Wingfield Hills. They are proposing a first, or a first final map, which will be the southern portion of this area, which will develop this entrance, but will only have a, an emergency exit or emergency access from this separate, second exit. They, the conditions of approval for this tentative map say that when they do make a final, a application for final map for the rest of it, they will be required to submit plans for the remainder of Wingfield Hills. Because Wingfield Hills goes across here and will tie into Lazy Five, it's a whole separate project that needs to get underway, and we didn't feel it was requisite that they develop up to that point for this first phase of the tentative map. So that is kind of the one piece of this that's not kind of boilerplate as far as tentative maps go. That's the extent of my presentation. If you have questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
Questions for Ian, Ms. Bybee? Christopher, did you?
Okay, I'm, I'm, okay, so now I'm really confused, because my question was on Wingfield Hills Road and the extension, and if the developer was going to be obliged to build that road. So you're saying because the entrance is down on Rolling Meadows, that only an access will be there? And when will that road, so you're going, will all these 140 homes be built with no Wingfield Hills Road access?
No, Ms. Bybee. The, so, let me get that picture back up. So both of these will be developed as an entrance and exit. We're just saying with this first phase, with the first final map that comes in, they're not anticipating developing that far north, so that, but they will develop an emergency access so that the fire department has a way in and out from both sides. The, the development of Wingfield Hills will need to happen and is proposed as part of the ultimate development of this, this piece and for the rest of Pioneer Meadows. But because it's an RTC project that incorporates more than just this little piece they would need to build in order to have that full access at this point during the first phase, we said they could, we, our agreement with them or our condition that we crafted was that they could use that emergency access up to the point where they needed to get there. And by that point, not only were they going to need to build that section, but the rest of it needs to have all of the engineering and the design work done so that it can be completed as a project, because it is a very large piece.
So is this, the 140 homes, is this in phases?
Yes.
So is this kind of like, we were looking at Kylie Ranch North, where it's, so it's not the full 140? Is this going to be divided into phases? And because the lower homes are starting, that's the first phase? And, and are they, are we approving them in phases? Or are we approving all 140 today? Kind of tell me, I'm a little, I'm really confused now.
Well, I just want to touch upon the hills and...
Name for the record, please.
Yes, John Erickson, city engineer. We will be working with the RTC on getting the hills and Lazy Five into their CIP, so the road will ultimately get constructed. We're working with the RTC staff right now and getting that program developed in their CIP.
Will be building it?
Well, the developers are responsible for the first two lanes through the, through the program that the RTC has. And so if it needs to be widened, then we can condition the right-of-way, and then they can build the first two lanes. And then when the road needs to be widened, then the RTC would come in behind it and widen the roadway. Very similar to what occurred on South McCarran back in the 80s and 90s. You know, the RTC built the first two lanes, and then once they needed the capacity, they came in and built the outer lanes of McCarran. So it'd be similar to that.
So timeline, timeframe on, on the building of the road then is not until...
It's going to be development, it's going to be development-driven.
Okay, so not until more homes are put in the second phase? But today, we're approving the whole?
We're approving the tentative map for the whole.
T tentative map for the whole 140?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. And then they're, they've actually, they've actually already submitted the final map for the first 80 homes, which is the first southern phase. The city council should see that in the next, I'd say, month or two. That should be coming this way. But yeah, so, so that's what's being asked for today, is a tentative map for all 140 acres, that when they come in for the final map, they'll have to meet those criteria that are set forth in the conditions of approval for the tentative map.
John, similar to how Vista came about with two lanes in, then went to four, is we've got more and more people, more traffic?
Exactly.
Okay. Next, Mr. Lawson.
So this is the only time we're going to see this project, then, since we're not approving final maps anymore, correct?
That is correct.
So how do we hold...
Final map?
Final map does not come to council any longer.
Oh, until...
Didn't we just vote that three or four months ago, that final maps do not come back to council?
Councilman Lawson, you did, in fact, nearly a year ago, ask staff to take a look at what it would take such that final maps would become an administrative duty, basically, of the city manager and his staff. That work is not complete. As we got into our development code, which is Title 17, we have found it to be very difficult to unwind that. Staff will be working on it. We will likely be coming forward to council with a request for an expenditure of money to get a consultant to help us. It involved...
The short answer, you have not reviewed a bill to bring forth an ordinance to change Title 17.
Thank you.
And we have.
Mr. Dare?
So I live right there, so I get, I know exactly what you're talking about. I live on this side of all that. One of my big, my big question has to do with some of the construction and some of the things. Are you, is that back road going in to make sure that we're not creating situations? You have a lot, quite a few homes that have gone in across the way, and the apartments, and if there's only one main entrance and the other seems like an emergency, are we competing quite a bit with construction? Is there any possible way they could use that back one? I don't, I'm, I'm just thinking of, thinking in the morning of everything that's going on and how that functions. You don't have a very large road right there. It's actually a very small entryway to be your main entrance to everything.
So the question is?
The question is, well, just construction traffic is one of them. How does that work? It's a very small road, and even when that's built, it doesn't seem like if that fully got built out, that having that one road used seems like a great, it seems like it's going to become a problem pretty quickly.
So that is the, the discussion about building Wingfield Hills Road, which is the road that goes over the top in this drawing, is about that, that issue of, of the amount of traffic that, right now, is slated to be on Rolling Meadows Drive.
Yes.
The, we feel, we know that ultimately, we're going to need Wingfield Hills to be built out, but for the apartment complex that is approved now and this tentative map, specifically the southern half that we know is coming in as a, for a final map, we feel like it will hold that kind of traffic, it will, it will accommodate that traffic. But that next phase for the final map is where they're going to have to start building road. An additional part of this is, is part of that RTC and the CIP that Mr. Erickson was talking about, is that this road's not currently in the RTC CIP, so all construction, they don't get the credits they would as, as the builder of that road from RTC. So we're trying to get that back in so that they can build it and not have all of that cost come back onto them, that they can take advantage of that RTC funding structure or rebate or credit structure that's in place.
And is that timing just unknown? Because you're talking about connecting the pyramid eventually, that Lazy Five. So is that just an unknown factor, like, or is there something, like, somebody else comes and says, "We're going to do this," so it automatically makes it they have to do it, or?
Yeah, there's, there's really three developments that are occurring out there. We've got, we've got this particular development, then we've got the Kylie Ranch area, and then Stone Brook. And we're working with all those developers right now to come up with a plan to get these roadways constructed. And so we have indicated to the developers that, you know, Wingfield Hills and Lazy Five will need, ultimately need to be built, and that when they overtax that, that one roadway to a point where it's, it's running out of capacity, that's where we'll condition them to build those roads.
Well, I'll let you know when it gets there, because I'll be getting out of there every morning, right there, so, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, we're looking for a motion. Anyone want to make a motion?
I do. Get there, Kristen.
We have a problem. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Dare.
I guess it's in five, Craig. It's in Ward 5. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the tentative map from Pioneer Meadows Plan Development, Village 10, associated with PCN 16043, adopting findings T1 through T12, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 13 as listed in the staff report.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Dare, seconded by Mr. Smith to approve agenda item 9.3, as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Okay, moving on, comments from the public. Anyone want to speak under comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, comments from the city council, city manager. Mr. Lawson?
Yes, I'd like to ask the city manager to start investigating containers, shipping containers as a form of housing, and what we need to do in the City of Sparks to make that a legal construction method. We had a little discussion at my meeting with community services, and we just need to clean it up. It seems like Reno's gone ahead and approved them without any modifications to their ordinance, and the same with the county, but I understand we may have some issues in the City of Sparks. I'd like to see that worked out and brought back to the council.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Drusko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an announcement. The following committee appointments are available. Airport noise advisory panel, one member for two years. Persons interested in serving on this committee should complete a community service application available from the city clerk's office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. You would click on City Services on the webpage, then click on Volunteering, Get Involved, then click on Fill Out a City of Sparks Volunteer Application. Applications will be accepted until the close of business on Friday, December 2nd, 2006. Thank you.
Mr. Dare?
I just want to thank everybody and tell the staff I'm very excited about working with you and city council, men and women who appear, and city manager and clerk and everybody else, and so, thank you. It's an honor to be here. I know, I'm sure Donald would say the same exact thing, and we're excited to be here.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, anyone else? Ms. Bybee?
Thank you.
I have my glasses on, I can see.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to welcome, congratulate Ron on being re-elected for his last term, and welcome our two new members, Councilman Abbott and Dare, joining us in the good work of the city. And since I, my other job is all about seniority, this is kind of awesome, because I'm not the rookie. I've got some seniority now, so I'm excited, excited for the work that we'll do together. And also to tell you what, to echo what Julia said, the staff is critically important, especially when you're brand-new, and it's, the learning curve is steep. So, depend on staff, work with city manager Driscoll, through him to your staff, and take advantage of their knowledge and their expertise, because it's invaluable, and it'll really help you as you're kind of getting your feet wet on this new adventure that you're embarking on. So, welcome.
Yeah, same to me. Welcome, Christopher and Donald. I think you'll find out as we move along, we're a council that does things. We don't study it and re-study it, and ask for this, that, the other. We look at it closely and do our homework, and then we get stuff done. We don't push the can down the road, as they say. So, welcome aboard. I think you'll have, you're going to have a nice ride with us, and we appreciate you all. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jen.
I'd like to welcome you. And before the phone calls start, if you haven't had an opportunity yet, get out there and pick up those campaign signs. All right, anyone else? Thanks, Jen. Thanks for reminding us. All right, see no further business, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.